Students, athletic directors, coaches in our community here for our first CPS Athletics Town Hall. And we're happy to have everybody here to talk about athletics in the district. I'm going to pull up a slideshow here. This is our first time doing a slideshow. We're excited to share that with you and talk about athletics as always. So I'll ask my assistant Brent to pull up our slides. There we go. All right, next slide Brent. All right, as we talk about the logistics of our town hall meeting today, we appreciate everybody for hopping on. And I know that there's going to be more people hopping on over this next hour. We'll have an opportunity for parents, students alike to go onto the Q and A section and send in your questions. All questions are going to be reviewed by our assistant Ricky Miller and documented. We'll have an opportunity to get that information to our board and answer questions back to all of you at a later date. And then towards the end, after our presentation, we'll have a live listening session. An opportunity for parents, students, coaches, and everyone to speak up and hear any of your thoughts, concerns, questions, feedback that we will review, have an opportunity to document and share with our Board of Education and Administration. Any technical questions can be put in the chat. And like I said before, we'll take all the feedback and look to respond back to all of our families. So at this time, I'm going to welcome our superintendent Laura Mitchell.
Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us. I'm happy to see that there are so many participants with us today. I want to welcome everyone to the upcoming school year. Summer went by so fast and I hope that everyone had a nice summer, that it was restful and that everyone is well. Today's town hall is to really hear from our parents and our students. We want to hear your voice as it relates to athletics in Cincinnati Public Schools for the upcoming school year. You know, in April, we started planning for the upcoming school year while our schools were closed. And we started thinking about what's the future of CPS? Because our system was so disrupted. And how can we use that disruption to really change how we do business within CPS? To be more applicable or relevant to what's happening. Of course, we recognize how important athletics are and co-curricular activities are for all of our young people. And so we felt that it was important to have a specific town hall dedicated to athletics. You may be aware that the board in July decided to go with a blended model for the upcoming school year in terms of students coming to school two to three days a week. And because of the confirmed cases for our area, the city of Cincinnati, the board has now made another decision in early August, so earlier this week, to change to a distance learning model for the upcoming school year, at least for the first five weeks of the school year. We're going to look at the data and see if we're able to open our schools with face-to-face instruction by the end of the month. But we know that all this has an impact on our kids in terms of extracurriculars, especially athletics. It's important that we recognize and remember that the system that we're working with has to be a very fluid system because things are changing on a daily basis in terms of our confirmed cases in the Cincinnati area. So you're going to be hearing some information about what's happening within CPS as it relates to athletics, but also across the state. And again, we want to spend the majority of time though, hearing from you. We want to hear from parents and we want to hear from students. What are your thoughts? What are your questions? What are your ideas? What are your hopes and fears for the future? So we appreciate you being with us and look forward to your comments. Thanks, and I'll hand it back over to Josh.
Thanks Superintendent Mitchell. Brent, you can start the slides. So families, students, parents, coaches, going to take an opportunity to go through kind of the start of the pandemic and the response from CPS Athletics and our timeline and things that may have happened and occurred since that time, as well as the most recent updates that we've made. And then, like we shared before, an opportunity for you guys to share your feedback, thoughts, and concerns. So starting March 14th, that was the day we announced that all schools would be closed out of abundance of caution. And as Superintendent Mitchell mentioned, things have been changing at a rapid pace consistently since that time. Our team and district athletics created and launched the Collaborating Care Initiative. We received a $20,000 donation to Collaborating Care. Then on April 3rd, we collaborated with our school athletic directors to create and implement our virtual athletics plan and honored our seniors in the class of 2020 with Be the Light Ohio. On April 20th, Ohio High School officially canceled spring sports. And we transitioned to a virtual athletic plan and collaborated with our ADs further and created a virtual championship challenge. Next slide. On June 3rd, we did start the Speak Up and Speak Out initiative. Then on June 8th, transitioned to Return to Play Phase 1. And then June 22nd, our Phase 2 Plan. And August 1st, our Phase 3 Plan that started with Fall Athletics. And the week of August 3rd, which is this week, we did announce the distance learning model and the impacts that it had on athletics at the time. So I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on that timeline, slide by slide, and share some information with you. So Collaborating Care for Cincinnati. As we transitioned to remote and distance learning for the end of the school year last year, our team was left with no athletics and extracurriculars. We had an opportunity to collaborate with some of our community partners to support our CPS student dining services and their 24 sites that offered additional food support for our families. So we collaborated with great partners such as Cincinnati Reds Community Fund, FCC, Cincinnati Bell, La Soup, so many partners throughout the city that really wanted to collaborate and take care of our kids. So thankful for our team, LJ Profit, Brent Langhorn, Asia Bradford, Ricky Miller, and some of the athletic directors that stepped up. Reid Finley at Spencer, Andrew Mueller at Hughes, and Mark Herman at Walnut Hills High School. They all stepped up and had an opportunity to collaborate with community partners to provide more for our kids. And then Cincinnati Bell donated a $20,000 check to truly kickstart our initiative. That grew to monetary donations in the amount of over $50,000 and non-monetary donations, almost $400,000. Next slide. Next slide Brent. All right, virtual athletics. At a time where we were not able to have traditional athletics, we collaborated with our athletic directors in schools and coaches and brought everybody together on how we can provide something for our student athletes during the spring season. So we created an online resource center. We met weekly with our athletic directors who were in contact with their coaches and the teams and began to collaborate to put together filmed workouts by our strength coaches, nutrition education, mental health resources. And then we went on to have some virtual competitions amongst our schools. Some fun TikTok-like styled videos to share and be voted on. And it was a great opportunity for us to do what we could at that time. Next slide. We knew that our seniors were not going to have the full opportunity that they would to end the school year last year. So we collaborated with ADs across the state for the Be the Light Ohio campaign. And throughout the week of April 14th, all of our schools that had stadiums and fields took an opportunity, as you can see here on the slide, to put 2020 for the class of 2020 on their scoreboards and shine the lights on their facilities in honor and recognition of our seniors in the class of 2020. But we thank all of our ADs that participated and we wish our class of 2020 nothing but the best as they transition onto their next steps. Next slide. On April 20th, the Ohio High School Athletic Association officially canceled spring sports. We were hanging tight to see what was happening there from the OSHA. And at that time, we went all in on our virtual athletics and the planning for summer and awaiting more information and feedback from the Ohio High School Athletic Association as well as the governor's office on what would be permitted with athletics moving forward for the spring and the summer. Next slide. All right, cool. As we transition into the summer months, we know that there was protests and rallies that came from social justice campaigns from the deaths that may have been seen throughout the country. We did have the superintendent reach out to me at that time and ask if I could collaborate with our students. And Will Johnson and Ashley Felts and the Family and Engagement Department to bring some of our students to an online forum such as this to give them an opportunity to speak up and speak out. And we were able to, in a matter of days, get a group of students representing our district to come on a live forum, thanks to our partners at CoHere, and bring our kids together to talk about what was happening in our city and our country. And we've seen great strides over our, what initially started as weekly sessions and turned into monthly sessions of a group of about 15 to 20 students that have the opportunity to speak up and speak out on what's happening right now. They have been meeting weekly in an executive group that has recently shared a document with the superintendent with their demands focusing on systemic racism and updating the curriculum within the district, better police relations, and then as we go into an upcoming election season, civic engagement. So that's been the main focus for those students. And they've done a phenomenal job with speaking up and speaking out. And I look forward to supporting them and our department looks forward to supporting them further. Next slide. Also, as we transition into the summer, we did work very hard with the guidance that was put out by the state and the Ohio High School Athletic Association to put together procedures to allow for athletics to return in a modified way. And our Phase 1 did begin on June 8th. And as you can see listed there, the highly detailed health and safety requirements that we put in place at all of our schools. So all athletic directors went through all of their facilities and prepped them for Phase 1. Submitted those documents to the district office for review and were approved with a focus on social distancing, mask wearing, being outdoor, no contact, no shared equipment, waivers and documents filled out by parents and coaches. And then coaches' education. At the time, there was not a video of training. So we put together documents for our coaches. And then when the National Federation of High Schools launched their video training certificate for COVID, we had all of our coaches take that as well. Next slide. We transitioned to Phase 2 on June 22nd. At that time, we did allow for indoor activities with small, limited numbers and some equipment starting to be used, as long as it was approved by the athletic director, fully sanitized and done in the most healthy and safe way at the time. And after review, that Phase 2 continued for some time. Did take us into the July months. After reviewing the health and safety guidance and standards that we put in place, we did make the decision to suspend elementary athletics for the fall season on July 24th and shared that with the principals and our sports booster family. Next slide. And August 1st, last week, as we started the official fall season, we began our Phase 3 that allowed for a larger number of student athletes participating in moderate high-risk sports to begin practicing, including tryouts, to align with the start of fall for the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Next slide. And as Superintendent Mitchell mentioned, at the start of this week, there was an announcement to transition to distance learning from our blended learning model due to data in partnership with Cincinnati Children's. And at that time, we did make the decision to pause high school athletics at our Phase 3 that we transitioned to, meaning the ability to continue internally with competition at each respective CPS high school and no interscholastic competition competing outside of our schools. And the decision to suspend junior high athletics for the fall season. Next slide. And then where are we today with athletics? The Ohio High School Athletic Association has consistently put out that we will be proceeding with fall athletics and starting on August 1st as we had. There's also been updates from the Ohio High School Athletic Association that they're working closely with the governor's office on putting together a plan and proposal that would allow for athletic competition with all contact, low contact, no contact sports. And I believe that that is still being worked on. And we're awaiting guidance from the Ohio High School Athletic Association as well as the governor's office on what would be permitted and how that would look moving forward. My understanding that there's a potential of modified schedules and seasons for fall, winter, and spring that we would be awaiting from the Ohio High School Athletic Association. And as we look nationwide, as of August 6th, through the National Federation of High Schools, you can see this state map here, and USA map in regards to the states that have transitioned to a modified fall season. You see the 35 states that have, knowing that Ohio is one of 16 states that has not made fall sports modifications truly with season at this time. But it is very important that we say at this time because as we know, this landscape is changing every day, every minute, every hour. And as I sit here today at 12:50 on August 7th in regards to what the landscape looks like, we know that Ohio High School Athletic Association has traditionally and consistently put out updates on Fridays going into the weekend and the following week. And at any point, there could be another update from not only the governor's office but as well the Ohio High School Athletic Association that could change this landscape to say that Ohio is now part of the states that have modified fall seasons and beyond. And that is what we would expect to see either today or in the near future from the Ohio High School Athletic Association. So Brent, you can close out the content sharing at this time. And that would close our presentation. As I said before, we understand that this is a fluid time and we must remain flexible and have the ability to adapt. Just want to take a second to make it clear that there have not been final decisions made on athletics and extracurriculars as we move forward. And we would like to use the remainder of this time to hear your thoughts as parents, students, coaches, whoever may be joining us today. I will be documenting this fully, taking notes, and have the opportunity to recap with Superintendent Mitchell as she presents these items to our Board of Education. So at this time, if you would like to speak, have your voice heard, we ask you to use the raise hand feature. Our general counsel Dan Hoing will support us in bringing people over for their comments and concerns and thoughts. And in the same right, if you have questions or anything that you would like to put in the chat and you don't feel comfortable speaking, please do so. But at this time, we can transition to Dan. Do we have any raised hands at this time?
Yeah, we're starting to get some folks who have requested to come over. We've got, it looks like Kim. Nope, she has withdrawn her request. So if you have an interest in speaking, click on the raise hand function and then we can bring you over to interact live. Note, Josh, there's about a 15 or 30 second delay on this Blue Jeans call. So it could take just a second for folks to raise their hand.
Understood. All right, parents, students, anyone who would like the opportunity to speak up and share any thoughts, please feel free to start raising your hands now. Looks like we have a few that are starting to come in. So Dan's going to start to announce names and then bring you over. When he does, he'll ask you to take yourself off of mute. It'll be your opportunity, if you'd like, to unmute your video as well. But initially, we'll just need you to unmute your audio to share. Dan?
That's right, Josh. So if, as I bring you over, keep yourselves on mute and then I will unmute you and you can say your piece. So Erin Up is our first speaker, Josh.
Hi, I have a daughter that plays soccer at Walnut Hills. And I'm just trying to figure out how as parents, we can advocate on behalf to the school board. Is there any way that we can consider allowing a return to play for sports in the first five weeks of remote learning if OSHA does allow a return to competition? We have been playing all summer, following all of the guidelines, and we have proven that we can be safe doing that. So I hate to see majority of the season taken away from them while other schools in the community might still be playing.
Thanks Erin, we appreciate your comment there. As we said before, Superintendent Mitchell and myself will share some of these comments and feedback with the board.
Okay, Josh, our next speaker is Melissa. Melissa, go ahead when you're ready.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, Melissa.
Okay, my concern is in no-contact sports like tennis. My daughter plays tennis. The other schools in the district, I've gone ahead and checked, are all moving ahead with their season. And they have such a very, very small season to begin with. If we do not play until after we allegedly go back to school at the end of September, their season's actually over by then. So that completely takes their season out. Every other school in their, I don't know if you want to call it the district who they play, is moving ahead, playing each other. Tennis and golf are extremely distant sports. There is no reason for the players to be any closer than six to eight feet. So I hope that each sport is looked at on a one-to-one basis and we don't just make a blanket decision. Also, we do not have busing. I don't know if they do for other sports. Walnut Hills Tennis has never had busing. Us as parents take the children and always have. So we, again, can take them to the matches with the other schools. They need be nowhere near the other kids. And I believe that we should be able to make the decision for our kids whether or not they want to play.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Melissa. And just for clarification of Melissa's comment, anticipate she's representing Walnut Hills High School. And when she says the other schools in the district, she means other schools in the conference, in the Eastern Cincinnati Conference. And we understand that Walnut Hills and Clark are in different scenarios of the remaining CPS schools as they are in the ECC and the MBC. And our remaining schools are in the CMAC. Thank you, Melissa.
Hey Josh, our next speaker will be Kelly. And Kelly will be followed by Michael Moore and then Kim Perry. So Kelly, go ahead.
Let's see, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kelly Bollinger. My son is an incoming seventh grader at Walnut Hills High School. He recently joined the cross-country team and has had a wonderful experience with it. So they've been running, I think it's only been about two weeks now, distanced. They're outside. It's been an amazing opportunity for him to be at his new school that I want him to feel connected to, he wants to feel connected to, to meet some other kids since he, of course, will be at home learning. It's a great way for him to get exercise and be outside and socialize. And I am just concerned about this new stipulation that junior high athletics have been suspended. I don't understand why junior high and not fall, or rather, not high school athletics have been suspended. That makes no sense to me. Our kids need exercise and activity and socialization as much as any other high school or maybe even more at this stage of his life. And I just would love to see this reenacted. I don't care if they never run in a meet. I just want them to get outside, run with other kids, see that his school. Just go to the school and be dropped off a couple of times a week, run on the track and be a part of the school. So I'm just really concerned that, you know, I know that we're trying to protect our children's health, but how is this protecting our children's health when they can't get outside and exercise with their classmates? It just seems really absurd to me. That's all.
Thanks, Kelly.
Hey Josh, our next speaker will be Michael Moore. And Michael will be followed by Kim Perry. I also want to let, there's a few folks who have been invited to come across. Erin Up, Fanta Lawrence, and Allison Cuchetti. If you accept the invitation, we'll bring you over and then you'll be, you'll follow these two speakers. Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Thanks, Dan.
Hi, thank you. Michael Moore, also an incoming seventh grade student at Walnut Hills. She's been hearkening on Kelly's comments. She's been playing volleyball, soccer, and basketball for the time that they've been doing the practices. Wondering if those practices will still be allowed, again, as Kelly said, outside of any competition, but it would be nice to allow those practices to continue because it seems like they've been successful. And I guess a tag-on question would be, I mean, how many students have been infected from what schools and in what sports? Is that something that's driving this more than whatever coming down from the state?
Got it. Thanks, Michael. Yep, go ahead.
Can we address that question in terms of the number? Because we've had quite a few kids who have been confirmed with COVID.
Sure. So today, through our skills training sessions from the start in June, we have nine confirmed positive cases in students and two confirmed cases with coaches. And our procedures for that has been, at any time, any program that has that involvement with a positive case would be on pause and shut down for a matter of two weeks to allow everybody that may have interacted, knowing that it still wouldn't be considered a close contact because of all of the procedures that we put in place and that would be followed. But still notifying those families that they would take the two weeks, assess their child, and But still notifying those families that they would take the two weeks, assess their child and/or the coaches that were involved, and allow that program to start after the two weeks. To date, we have not had any tracing that traces that any of those 11 cases would have expanded within our skills training sessions. Everything has been traced back to outside of our skills training sessions and then brought in before they would be suspended for those two weeks.
Hey, Josh, thanks. Our next speaker will be Kim Perry, and she'll be followed by, or I'm sorry, Kim will be followed by Allison Cuchetti. Go ahead, Kim.
Ms. Town Hall, I think it's great that you are open to listening to our feedback. I would, one of my questions is, how can we, is there, I would like to know what else has been considered? What other options have been considered in order to get, to keep competition going and not take that five weeks off? I know there's five weeks of remote schooling. I'm struggling to see how that automatically means we need to take five weeks off of sports and extracurriculars. I think we saw in the spring just how devastating that was for the kids. And I know my kids reacted, you know, had struggled with that, without that structure and that competition. So what I'm wondering is, I know another parent asked, what can we, how can we reach out to the board? But what can we just do? Have you, I haven't seen any messages asking parents like, hey, are you willing to come in and do the extra cleaning or, you know, buy whatever extra equipment or whatever it would take? I mean, I'm, you know, I'm just spitballing, but can we do that? Is there an option where we can make it happen or can we opt our kids in or out, depending on how comfortable we're feeling? Because I've felt like CPS has done a great job of keeping the kids safe and healthy. And I know there's been kids with COVID and some coaches, but I really think CPS has done a good job as what, from what I've witnessed over the summer. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Josh, our next speaker is Allison Cuchetti, and Allison will be followed by Heather and then Vijaya. Go ahead, Allison.
Thanks. I appreciate you taking my comments. I am the mother of two children who go to school at Walnut Hills, and my youngest daughter plays soccer there. My concern, I guess I'll start with, I agree with what Melissa said earlier about the fact that we have already accepted an inherent amount of risk, including our students in participating in sports and being involved in sports anyway. And it seems to me that we are accepting additional risk and we are taking that upon ourselves, particularly at this time. So my question is, and the thing that I am concerned with beyond the things that people have already stated, is since the rest of the teams that we participate against are moving forward with the season, what happens to the games that we miss? Do we forfeit them because we don't show up? Do they get rescheduled? What happens with that? And if they get rescheduled, what happens at the end if we're rescheduling them and then we're cramming five games into a week in an effort to complete a season that other people have been doing at a scientifically appropriate time? So if we're really considering health risks to students, I think it's important for us to consider not just COVID, but the overall athletic safety of our students. And so that's my biggest concern. I think that hasn't already been mentioned. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. And just a quick comment to that. Our office is meeting consistently with the conferences, the Cincinnati Metro Athletic Conference, the Eastern Cincinnati Conference, and Miami Valley Conference to discuss these things. But as I stated in the beginning, there's still guidance to be coming from the Ohio High School Athletic Association on what the true season looks like that could probably change any schedule that's currently out there for any of the conferences, including ECC and Walnut's schedule. Thanks, Allison.
Okay, thanks. Our next speaker, Josh, will be Heather, followed by Vijaya, and then JD. Go ahead, Heather. Heather, you are unmuted and ready to speak. Josh, let's put Heather on hold and we'll go to Vijaya, and then we'll try back.
Got it.
Go ahead, Vijaya.
Hi, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity. So my son, he plays soccer. He's in eighth grade and he got selected into team. And he plays soccer for quite a while from his first grade, and he was really looking forward for the season. So he spent the whole summer practicing soccer, and then he participated in all camps and tryouts. And it was really disappointing for him to know the whole season got canceled. So like other parents said, even if it is for at least a practice session which is going on, if they can allow it, that would be a great motivation for them. Otherwise, it would be really a big break for soccer of highly, he's really a skilled player. So it would be a good break for him. That I don't want to happen. So I would request CPS authorities to reconsider fall sports, at least a practice for junior high students. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker will be JD, and then we'll check back with Heather, Josh.
Thanks, Dan.
Go ahead, JD. Try again, JD. You're unmuted now. Nope, sounds like JD's having issues too. We'll pause on JD and check back with Heather. Heather, are you there to speak with us? Okay, Josh, we're going to go to Jillian. Jillian Sella.
Got it.
Go ahead, Jillian.
No.
You're unmuted, Jillian, if you want to speak to us. All right, we'll pause on Jillian. Josh, I'm going to bring a few more folks across. David and Heather. You accept the invitation and then you'll be able to speak here. Okay, Heather has accepted the invitation. Let's try Heather. Go ahead, Heather.
Hi, sorry, I had technical difficulties. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thanks. So I did not hear the last few presenters because of the technical difficulties, but I'm piggybacking off of someone else. So there were four sports named non-contact by OSHA and the governor. And my concern is just that the board is aware that if it ends up that we have to move to a modified schedule, these four sports are going to get lost in the shuffle because they've been given the go-ahead by Lieutenant Governor John Housid and OSHA to go ahead and compete. Golf, tennis, girls' volleyball, and cross-country. I have a senior who runs cross-country. It's an easily modified sport with smaller meets and things like that, just like tennis, golf, and girls' volleyball. It's very low risk. So my question, or I guess my comment to the board is just that we please consider the kids in these four sports because even if contact is modified, these kids will be lost. They won't get a season at all, while everyone else will. So just hoping that, again, like someone else said, that we're paying attention to individual sports and not just a blanket. These have been given the go-ahead by the state. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Hey, Josh, our next speaker will be David. David, go ahead.
Juan, you mentioned that there were nine total positive tests that came in. And while that can be looked at as bad, it sounds like nothing was then transferred to any other student or coach. And quite frankly, nine out of thousands of athletes that have been participating all summer does quite appear to be a good story to tell, not a negative story. Second, and I don't know if the superintendent is on or will have access to these questions, but I'd like to get confirmation on the three data points that CPS is watching. She had posted on her slideshow that they were looking at three metrics. And if I understand things correctly, if we meet those three metrics on September 14th at the meeting, by all means, we would move forward with in-school teaching as well as sports. Currently, we are good on two of the three, one of which being we had to get out of red in the county, and we've done that. We have to be sustained decline in cases, and we're doing that. The other one is the positivity rate less than 5%. I don't know where that stands exactly. So two out of three, and I don't know that, doesn't sound like you can answer that today. But just if we could get that as a community to know, hey, this is our three targets. As long as we hit these, we're good to go back to normal. I think that's what we're owed as a community, not just the sports folks, but all of CPS. That way, we as a community also can work toward that target and see it making progress. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Josh, our next speaker is Bobby Sagers. And then after Bobby, we'll try back with Jillian and David to give them one more chance. I'm sorry, Jillian and JD. Go ahead, Bobby.
My on, David?
You are.
Okay, hey, how you doing? Hey, I've been part of this Cincinnati Public League for over 30-plus years, you know, scheduling the referees for football and basketball. So I just want to say Josh has done a great job leading our athletics from the football, basketball end. Like I said, I've scheduled the referees. I've been fortunate enough to be refereeing these games. Lot of great kids, coaches. You know, our teams are getting better every year. We had a couple go to the playoffs last year. And I guess my question to Superintendent Mitchell here would be, is there any chance we would start the season, maybe week three? I know we're not in school. And, or week two. I mean, I know OHSAA has not formally made a decision, but if they say we could start week two, could we go back and start week two? Or week three? Just throwing that out there. A couple of other things that I don't want to bore everybody, but will we have testing for the players, I'm sure, and the coaches, and a lot of my referees also will be tested? I do know that. But that's basically, I just really wanted to, you know, be part of this this town hall and throw my two cents worth in. So like I said, Friday nights, football for these kids and these students and the bands and the parents is really a cool thing. So like I said, through five weeks, I think we've lost around 20 games, 20-plus games. So something hopefully you guys, as powers-to-be, can take a look at and, you know, do what we got to do. So thanks for listening to me, and Josh, thanks for everything you do for our football league and basketball leagues, okay? And Superintendent Mitchell, thank you also.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Bobby. Really appreciate you and all the work that you put in for football and basketball in the district. And Bobby doesn't say it, but Bobby was one of the better officials back in the day when I would play basketball at Walnut Hills. And so it's been cool to have that relationship, and now it's transitioned to what it is today. Thanks, Bobby. We appreciate you.
Thanks so much. Josh, I think we have Jillian Sella now.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can.
Okay, great. I'm a parent of a soccer player, and I appreciate all your work to get the kids on the field. I know how important that is for them since they've been home and they need the exercise and all that. And I know that any parent who's sending their kid out there knows that they're going to be at some sort of risk. But when they're off the field, I like the rule that they're six feet apart and they're wearing masks. And I think that's really important to make sure that is maintained and enforced. And it was, kids aren't always thinking that's very serious. Also, I was really concerned with the August 1 article in the Cincinnati Inquirer where they showed teams that were not enforcing the distance at all. There was a soccer team where the girls were right next to each other in a big group off the field. I think maybe they just came off the field, but they're not from our ECC, but maybe another school with a football team was from our ECC. I'm not sure. But how do we know that the other teams are going to really take this seriously and enforce the distance and the masks when obviously on August 1, many teams were not? That's my question.
Hey, thanks, Jillian. Our next speaker, Josh, will be JD, and JD will be followed by Vince.
Hi, thanks. I just want to reiterate that we'd like to know the logic and the reasoning behind why junior high sports were canceled. You've told us what is happening, but you haven't told us why. And I think that's a lot of the frustration among parents is that we can't understand the logic. And then number two, we were recently downgraded in Hamilton County from red to orange. If we are downgraded from orange to yellow, will your approaches change? That's it.
Thank you for that comment and that feedback. Superintendent Mitchell, do you mind hopping on? I know we had a question in regards to the data points, and it kind of came back up here with JD's comment. Do you mind sharing on that?
Absolutely. So there are four data points, not three data points. So one data point is the color coding system as identified by the governor. And the caller who called in is correct, and we have moved from red to orange, which is a good thing. The trend data is not stable. So I actually just pulled the report today from this morning to look at the trend data. And so the trend data, this is the epidemiology curve, and this shows confirmed cases. So for an example, on between August the 1st and the 3rd, we took a dip down. And then we went down again on August the 5th, and then we popped back up on August the 7th. And so we do not have a trend, a downward trend, which would show at least 14 data points of us consistently moving downward in terms of confirmed cases. So we have not met that indicator. We also have not met the positivity rate indicator, which identifies other people who have been tested for COVID, what percent actually have a positive test. We are at 7.7, and we want to be in the 5% to 6% range. And then the fourth indicator that we have not met is the turnaround time for test results. Currently, the turnaround time can be from anywhere from three days to 14 days. And so of the four indicators, we have met one, which is we are now orange as opposed to red. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you for sharing that, Superintendent Mitchell. That's important information. Ms. Hoing, it looks like we've got a few more, and with our time, it looks like we'd be able to get through those before we close it out. And then I'll just remind everybody, if you do not want to speak, if you could just put your comments or questions in the chat, we'll fully be looking through that as well and working together with our team to answer all those questions.
Yep, Josh, just a few more speakers. Vince will be next. We've requested or sent invitations to Rhonda and Steph Troyer. If they want to accept the invitation, we can probably fit them in also, but right now, we've got Vince. So Vince, if you're there, go ahead.
Hey there. So I'm a coach at Withrow. I coach soccer, and I had a few concerns. One, I read and I noticed that there is a possibility that these fall sports, contact sports, may be moved to the spring. I love that idea since it was mentioned, but unfortunately, we're kind of too, it's kind of late to move on it now. I was wondering if, I know you don't normally answer questions, but maybe just kind of speak to the likelihood that that will happen? I know that we're waiting till September to find out how the data moves. But, you know, with it for maybe like a month, I'm not sure what big changes will be available by then. So, you know, maybe just speak to the likelihood of moving to that. And this sooner rather than later, I think would be great so that all, all sports and spring sports can start coordinating. Because I know there was a concern about dual-sport athletes wanting to compete in, say, like football and baseball would now be in the same season, which would cause conflict for a lot of students. So just speak to the likelihood of moving it to spring. And my second one, the, the previous, one of the previous speakers was an official and that kind of sparked this up. What, how are the official, what's the official pool like for referees? I know a lot of the officials, kind of thing I said is, are in the age range of those that are vulnerable. So in the past, I've been told by many referees that the, the referee pool is shrinking and it's hard to schedule games. And my team has suffered from that in the past where for a varsity rival or game, only having two officials instead of three. It's a big, it's a big deal and it really does impact the game. So I was wondering what the official pools were looking like and, and where we were drawing from. And if we did it later in the season, what is, is that going to look like as far as officials go? So those are kind of my only two questions. I know that you can't, might not be able to speak to them, but just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, appreciate that comment, those questions, Vince. Yeah, for sure. The official pool is, is something that has been concerning for many years across the state and quite frankly, across the country. And with the, the numbers declining and the number of officials that we have. So we've been a part of trying to encourage those numbers to go up, you know, pre-COVID. And now being in a situation that, you know, that being a group of vulnerable individuals, yes, it is a concern. We still don't know what fall truly looks like for Ohio High School Athletic Association sports. And I, I just have a call that just came in right now from the department that I've been requesting. So I'll be looking forward to calling them back after this is over. But the scenarios of adjustments from fall to spring, you know, was discussed. But like you said, that the timeframe now to be able to adjust that would most likely be difficult on the, on their side in regards to their guidance. But I do anticipate guidance coming from them soon on what fall will look like, if that's going to be a modified and shortened schedule. So, you know, the landscape is going to be different and it could be that we have much less games naturally, regardless of how CPS and our schools move forward. Dan?
Hey, Josh, our, our next speaker is Steph Schroyer. Go ahead, Steph.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for setting this town hall up and letting us all speak. I just want to make sure that you guys are doing and keeping in mind the overall health of the whole entire student population when you're thinking about this. Because athletics is not only about the physical health of a student, but it also helps with depression and everything. And I've had two students at Walnut Hills High School. My, one was a senior who just graduated and is moving on to play college soccer. And, you know, the other is a freshman and he's looking at playing two sports this year. So this, this fall, there's been multiple studies gone out that says like how well having competition and being part of a team help the mental stability of these students. And as you know, Walnut is extremely hard on these kids. And just having some sort of outlet and being part of something, and especially in this time of uncertainty, I think it would be beneficial. So just think of, you know, can you prevent the depression? Can you print the other things, the positive things you can prevent by allowing athletics as opposed to the negative aspects of contracting the virus? And as someone else pointed out, I mean, I think the numbers and the way that CPS has been going about doing the practices and the trainings and all the protocol that they've had in place have been positive. So just think about that and make sure that you're doing the right things for the students and making sure you're looking at their overall health as well.
Yeah. Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Dan. You know, to that, Steph, I appreciate that comment and the same, you know, being brought back to the board. But, you know, I, I just want to say that I know that this has been a roller coaster for, for all of us. You know, one day it's this and then the next day it's that. And we know that our world is, is changing at a true rapid pace and updates are, are changing our landscape within hours and, and honestly minutes. And it's, it's hard. And I, on behalf of the district, you know, want to say sorry that our staff, administration, board, partners, parents, all of Cincinnati and most importantly, our students are, are going through this and experiencing this. But just know that, that we stand here in regards to athletics in our department every day with the goal of providing opportunities for our students. And most importantly, we want to get our students back in the classrooms. And we will be here every day through this roller coaster with a focus on, you know, the health and safety of our students and our staff. And that's bottom line. So thanks for that comment, Steph. And thank you all for the time today and thank Superintendent Mitchell and my team behind the scenes for this town hall. Of course, Dan Hoing for the, the live speaker interaction. We're going to continue to work on the questions that may have come in the chat, the comments and feedback that were shared today during the live speaking session. I have put together an overall document on this town hall to be able to share with our Board of Education and the superintendent to review fully as we make our decisions for next step. So just want to say thanks to everybody as we're right on time in closing out. We'll look forward to sharing more information with you.